I'd like to call a meeting in order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and open to public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Silman. Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
To information, only Chairperson Silman is not here this evening because she is attending a family member's graduation. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Gill, can you please lead?
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public submit written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. We'll be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Next would be agenda modifications. Anybody have any modifications or interest in approving, changing the minutes from the last meeting? Nope. We have a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Yes.
Commissioner Noor.
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
All right. Any commissioners have any interest in modifying the minutes of the last meeting? Can we take a vote to approve the minutes?
Commissioner Noor.
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Yes.
Next would be business items. Item number five, consideration of general plan amendment 22-01, rezone 2202, tentative parcel map 2201. Speaking for the city would be Ashley.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Happy to be here. The first item that I have to present to you today is for a duplex development project. There are three entitlements involved, and this presentation will go through the different entitlements proposed for this development. We're gonna wing it. So, like I said, this project requires three different planning entitlements. What that means is there's a general plan amendment, rezone, and a tentative parcel map proposed. And this presentation will go through the different elements required for this project. The proposed project is located just north of Yuba City High School at the corner of Frederick Street and Cooper Avenue. The project site is approximately 0.31 acres, and you can see it here on the map highlighted in yellow. The first part of this proposal is the general plan amendment. A general plan amendment is when you change the land use color on the map. So, the land use is the part of the general plan that tells us what type of development is allowed in a specific location. As you can see on this map, the existing land use is low-density residential, or the light-yellow color, and the proposed land use designation is medium-high-density residential, the dark-orange color. This land use permits 12 to 36 dwelling units per acre. That's how the density is characterized in the general plan. And I did want to note that although it kind of looks from this map that there's no more dark orange around it, the zoning is what kind of tells the story a bit better. So, the zoning is the next layer on the map. It's a general plan land use and then the zoning designation. This entire area on Frederick Street, B Street, Cooper, is all designated as R2, which is for two-family development. So, kind of your mid-range development projects, duplexes, small apartments, et cetera. And what this project is proposing is to change that R2 development, R2 zoning, to R3, which allows for higher density and more, because this site is a bit compact, that proposal is proposed in order to develop duplexes on this site. And I'll get into that a little bit more as we dig into the project. So, as I mentioned, they're proposing R3 with an additional layer. So, we have the general plan, the zoning, and next I'm gonna talk about the combining district layer. So, it's kind of like a cake. You stack these three things on top of this one parcel. What a combining district is for is to add additional requirements or project-specific, site-specific development standards. And the applicant is proposing to change the development standards for the R3 zone in order to allow for duplexes, in order to allow for development on smaller parcel sizes, because this is a more compact space, and to allow for reduced yard widths, yard depths, et cetera. The final entitlement that's being proposed is a tentative parcel map. So, that's a land division. They're taking two existing parcels and proposing to divide it into three parcels, as shown on this map. Each parcel is more or less the same size, approximately .1 acre. So, smaller lots, and that's why this overlay is needed, because the R3-zone district currently asks for 10,000-square-foot acre, no, 10,000-square-foot-size parcel, and these do not meet that requirement. But I did want to note that something the city is currently doing is working with a third party to analyze and audit our zoning codes, to find areas where our current development standards may make housing development a bit tricky, a bit sticky. And some of the elements that they've identified are the lot sizes, some of the setbacks, et cetera. So, we're working on potentially bringing forward a proposal for these standards in the coming months in order to promote more housing, which is what we have adopted in our general plan and our housing element to provide for these more mixed type of housing uses. So, we analyzed the proposal for the three different entitlements, and as you can see on this map, in the area, there's a mix of housing types. There's some duplexes, some smaller apartments, some single-family homes, and it's also adjacent to the high school, to parks, to commercial corridors. And we found that the proposal with the density that they have proposed is in collaboration? Consistent. It's consistent with the surrounding area. In order to approve an X overlay, so that third piece of the puzzle, there needs to be a community benefit. And this project, as outlined in your staff report, staff has analyzed that the project provides a benefit to the community by providing this more moderate income-level housing, smaller duplex development that will suit different people in the community. And as I mentioned, this is something that the city is, has set goals for in our general plan and in our housing element, to provide housing types of a mixed type of variety. We also looked at traffic. This is a small development. It's three duplexes, so the traffic impact is very small. And currently with the zoning and the development potential as is, there's 32 trips per day, which is significantly under the 110 trips-per-day threshold, and the proposed development just brings it up to 48. We prepared an environmental assessment under CEQA for this project and determined that there is no significant effect on the environment if the mitigation measures are followed, as outlined in the staff report. So, each of these entitlements that I've discussed, the general plan amendment, rezone, and the tentative map, have specific findings that need to be met in order to approve the project. The general plan amendment findings, based on staff's analysis, public necessity, general welfare, good planning practice, public interest and convenience warrant the approval of general plan amendment 2201. The rezone findings are outlined in your staff report in the resolution, as well as on this slide, that discuss how the project is consistent with the general plan goals and policies. It's consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the open space and public convenience and aesthetic values, and it will provide the creation of a quality and balanced neighborhood. And then the tentative map findings, it's a bit trickier because we have to, the findings are kind of backwards. It's like a double negative. But staff has analyzed the findings and found that none of the findings that would need to be met in order to deny it can be found, as outlined here. So, at this point, staff brings forward a recommendation to conduct a public hearing, to adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the environmental assessment, the general plan amendment, and the rezone, because those elements have to go on to council, and to adopt a resolution to contingently approve the tentative parcel map, as outlined in the recommendation in your staff report. So, at this point, I'll take any questions. We also have the project applicant here, Mike Vasquez. He's engineer, who would be able to answer any questions regarding the project if there are additional comments or questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I have a question. I know that that corner right there can get pretty congested. Has it been the traffic that's going to be coming through there, is there any street parking for it for the people that will be there? I assume they will park in their designated spots, but how will it accommodate that?
My understanding is there will be street parking, like on interior residential streets. And then also, when the developer is wanting to bring forward for the next stage of development, it would be the building permit process, where planning, building, and public works will analyze it to make sure it meets the zoning code requirements for development. So, it would be the proposed requirements that we're bringing forward to tonight about the lot sizes and the existing requirements for parking, street width, street parking, all that.
Can I ask one question? I live one house. Oh, I hear that out voice.
All right. Would I open a public hearing? Be sure each speaker states their name for the record and uses a microphone, so it will be picked up by the video.
Hi, my name is Cheryl St. John. I live one house from the corner of Frederick and Cooper, and I'm here to kind of talk about the schools' parking, because during the school session, every edge of Cooper and Frederick is taken by current parking. My concern was, will they have off-street parking to these new houses? Because otherwise, it may be a problem. And that's my only concern, is there's really not constant on-street parking for those houses, because the high school kids take them. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Would it be possible if the applicant, Mike, were to speak on that matter? He's dug into the design and the intricacies.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Vasquez. I am the project applicant, representing the owner. Yes, each individual duplex will have garage, two-car parking. So, that's hoping will alleviate the public's concern and as well as trying to minimize any on-street parking for each of the duplexes.
That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further public comment? All right, public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any questions or wish to discuss the issue further? All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council that approve environmental assessment 2204 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration, subject to mitigation measures, approve the general plan amendment GPA 2201, and adopt an ordinance approving rezone 2202 for the Ratcliffe duplex development located on approximately .31 acres located at the southwest corner of Cooper Avenue and Frederick Street, assess parcel number 52-283-012 and 013, and adopt a resolution contingently approving tentative parcel map 2201, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures on approximately .31 acres located at the same corner on the same parcel numbers.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Noor.
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Yes.
All right, passes. Congratulations. Next, staff presentation by Doug Libby. He'll be presenting items six and seven.
Good evening, commissioners. Nice to see everyone again. We've had a couple of months away from each other. So, before we get into this item, just wanted to bring the commission up to speed. Ahead of the meeting tonight, we handed out a memo with both a reprint of the conditions, and the reason being is because the memo outlines we did an amendment to the conditions, and we actually ended up combining a couple of them. And so, we have a new condition number six. We show you what the change is and track changes. We have, the renumbering caused a change from condition, I think it was 42, now condition number 39, and you'll see the track changes. So, to eliminate the confusion, we reflect the change on the memo, and we did a whole reprint of the condition, so you have all the numbering before you. And I'll go ahead and get into the presentation. So, West Walton Village, this is a tentative subdivision map and planned development, PD 18. This is located on the west side of Walton Avenue, approximately 670 feet north of Franklin Road. It's on just over nine acres in size. Has a general plan designation of medium-low density. It allows for a density range of 6 to 14 dwelling units to the acre. The zoning is R2, so that's our two-family residence district. The project is a subdivision map to divide that nine acres into 66 half-plex lots and six single-family lots. So, the difference between a half-plex, for those who may not know, and a duplex is a duplex, I own the lot, I may lease out a unit to two different people. Whereas a half-plex is the people who live there can own the half and share a common wall. So, that's the difference. And what we like about this project is being half-plexes, is it provides entry-level housing, something this area has needed for a long time, and a lot of areas in the state. So, in total, the project would result in 72 new units, and that's about 8.65 dwelling units to the acre. And that's not even really the midpoint of the allowed density. So, if we go back, you'll see the density is 6 to 14 dwelling units to the acres, what the general plan allows, and they're proposing 8.65. I'll also note that the project includes four lots, which have been sized in order to allow the potential for accessory dwelling units. And so, those are on the south side of Phase 1. They're called out there. You'll see ADU, and then there's one in Phase 2. So, four lots there. Now, the planned development, the PD is proposed to amend the development standards by specifying that they will be half-plexes, allow for reduced lot sizes, allow increased lot coverages, and what I mean by that is maximum percent lot coverage. It will modify, slight modification to the depth-to-width standards and for some reduced setbacks. Now, as Ashley touched on a moment ago with her presentation, the city used some grant funds in order to do a zoning code audit, and they are wrapping up that. And a lot of the things that they are touching on with a lot of jurisdictions where they do this is the need to amend lot sizes, amend maximum percent lot coverages, modify the setbacks. Because we have general plan designations that say you can do this 6 to 14 dwelling units to the acre, but then when you go into actually build a project and you start putting setbacks on, you find out what your building envelope is, you can't get anywhere near that. So, what we're looking at is being able to take that zoning code audit and use some of the tools that they're giving us and bring some of those ideas forward to see some of the things the city may want to consider implementing for our community. So, the planned development, the existing zoning is R2, as I've noted, and the proposed zoning will be PD 18. The development standards for the planned development are available in your attachment 1, Exhibit A of your staff report packet. Okay, analysis, compatibility. The surrounding uses out there are a mix of uses ranging from single-family, two-family, including multifamily, and there's even commercial, some commercial directly due south. Staff does not see incompatibilities between these uses. All city services will be available to the property. Regarding traffic, that's always a popular topic. Site was previously developed as a mobile home park that was originally permitted in the county, which allowed for increased traffic. So, although the site has been mostly cleared now, that's what was previously permitted, upwards of 50 mobile home sites at one point. Walton Avenue, Franklin Road are existing four-lane city arterials designed to accommodate the high-traffic volumes. Surrounding intersections, that's Walton Avenue, Bridge Street, and Walton Avenue and Franklin, operate within the city's level-of-service standards. With regard to environmental review, as with most of our projects, we are required to prepare an environmental assessment in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act and the guidelines. The environmental assessment determined that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment with the incorporation of specific conditions or mitigation measures, is what those are called. So, staff is carrying forward a mitigated negative declaration, is our recommendation to you. As with most things that we bring forward, we have to make findings. It's the rationale for the city making its decision. And the findings outlined in the municipal code are shown on the screen, and the responses to those are laid out in your proposed resolution. As Ashley touched on, the tentative map findings, if you wish to deny a map, you actually have to make at least one of these findings. Now, as you know, staff is recommending approval of this project, because we don't believe any of those findings can be made. Because the project is consistent with the general plan, we think the improvements of the subdivision are consistent with the general plan, we think the site is physically suitable, can accommodate the type of development proposed. So, staff's recommendation, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the environmental assessment and planned development 18, and also adopt a resolution contingently approving the subdivision map based upon the conditions of approval laid out in your staff report. And that would conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission?
I have a question. Mr. Libby, and this may be better directed to the applicant, but I noticed there are a series of what I would historically call "flag lots." For example, I don't have my glasses on, but let's look at number 31 and 32. Just kind of curious what the justification was for that, and if staff has any concerns long-term with code enforcement and what might take place on those back portions of those lots.
Pardon me, as the old tired eyes get a little closer to the screen. So, some of those lots that you called the "flag lots," they are called out for, in order to accommodate the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit. So, if they want, you could have the house up front.
Thank you.
You could have a mother-in-law house in the back.
Perfect, thank you.
And so, but they do meet the average depth-to-width.
Perfect.
Requirement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Only question I had. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Again, be sure each speaker states their name for the record and uses a microphone, so it will be picked up by the video.
Good evening. This is Heather Essman. I live on the corner of Lincoln and Sanborn in the city limits of Yuba City, and I gave you some little facts there, a little fact sheet, because I'm also on the, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm on the Yuba Sutter, Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health Advisory Board. And one of the things that they said that, particularly with the seniors, is that they would like to live in mobile home parks. It's the number-one thing that they always say, that if they wanted to go somewhere, they want to live in a mobile home. They don't want to live in places where it looks like an apartment complex, where there's lots of people. They want to have a little bit of their own space, and I understand that. So, when I saw that this is being developed, and I, trust me, I've driven by there, I don't know how many times, because Walton is the only way to get down to where I live, right? And I am so glad that somebody's addressing the issues, because that has been nothing but an eyesore for years and years and years. But what I hate to do is to find out that when there's so many people wanting mobile homes in our area, we don't even have the percentage of the amount of mobile homes for the state, we're even lower than that in Sutter County. So, and I understand, this used to be county and whatever, but until last year, there were actually three homes on there where people were still living, because lights were on, in mobile homes in the back. You probably didn't see it. You would have seen it if you'd gone to the falafel place. You can see that there were three mobile homes right there, not the ones that had all the graffiti on it. So, I know that there are certain things that they told you that says that you can't return it for, whatever, but you could also ask them to clarify that whether or not it can be used as a mobile home park, and they can maybe explain. Because my understanding, when I spoke to some people about mobile home parks, I was told that the state does not allow for new permits for mobile home parks to be developed or approved, and I'm sure that they can confirm that or not. And if we do that and we lose the chance of being able to lock down a park for us, then I feel that that's not, that's a detriment to the citizens, because the citizens really would prefer to have that type of housing, as opposed to, so, there's plenty of other spaces where we have within the town where we could develop something like that. And I really do like the idea of the half-plex, because as I try to tell people, I'm going to be one of those people. I'll probably have to buy one of those later on in life, either that or a mobile home, because the way that I, the way things happen, I'm single, I'm going to hit retirement, I'm not going to have my house paid by that time. So, I'm thinking about these types of things, and I want to have something available to me later. So, I do like the idea of a half-plex, or even a condo, which I think we only have maybe four condominium places here in town. That's what a real estate agent told me. So, if there's any way to just at least get clarification, if that's true, whether or not we can get more mobile home parks approved somewhere, either, because the county was trying to do that, and Ziegemeyer was trying to talk about that. But anyways, so, if you can, you can always just send it back and say, is there a possibility that this can continue to be a mobile home park or not? Because a lot of times what we have is people coming, taking something that's existing, whether it was approved or not, or grandfathered in, I don't know, and trying to change it into something else. And you guys have, in the past, also said no. For example, the woman who wanted to put in a residential home on Franklin for a doctor's office, if you remember that one on the corner of Gray and Franklin, you said no. And the city council also said no. So, people can't be buying things and then turning them into whatever they want, right? It has to kind of fit with what we need. So, I'm hoping that you'll think about that, and you'll think about the facts that we have here, even though it sounds like there's a lot of sites there. That's really not very many sites when you compare the rest of the state. So, thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Menard, I'm with MHM Engineering. Oh, you're trying to...
Hello, my name is Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, I represent the owner of the property. And as for, you know, doing mobile home parks or manufactured home parks, we've looked at that on other projects, the cost to do them is not feasible for a development project. If this was already an existing mobile home park and fully developed and met all the requirements of the state, I'm sure it would remain a mobile home park, but that's not the case, and the highest and best use that we could find is what we presented tonight, and we worked with the staff, we went through the conditions, and we look forward to getting this project approved and moving to the next step and going to construction. So if you have any questions on any of the technical aspects or anything, and other details, I think Doug did a great job explaining the ADU, we tried to maximize that lot size to, so if we're going to have ADU, to make it as big as we possibly could, so.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them.
Questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. Commission has any further questions, if you'd like to ask either Doug or anybody else?
So I'm happy to address some of the public comments made.
Please do.
Okay, so the city does not try to discourage mobile home parks. In fact, if you look at our zoning code, and you can even go into R1, R2, or R3, all of them allow for mobile home parks. And I absolutely hear what the public said, is that, you know, we don't see a lot of mobile home parks coming in. You do need to get them, go through the state and get, you know, have to be registered, but as far as, you know, does the city allow for it? Absolutely. And in fact, as was noted by the project engineer, there was a mobile home park, has been entitled on this property, but for the highest and best use for the applicant, they feel that the proposed project before you is what they would like to do. So I'm happy to answer any further questions, if you have any. I have to acknowledge that I got my paperwork confused. When I started off the presentation, I noted that the, we had amended conditions, and that was actually for the next agenda item, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission?
No questions.
No questions. All right, time to for the roll call vote, please. Actually, I apologize. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to adopt a resolution recommending the city council, the city of Yuba City approve environmental assessment 23-02 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the proposed conditions of approval and mitigation measures, or tentative subdivision map 23-01 and approve Plan Development 18, zone district located on the west side of Walton Avenue approximately 670 feet north of Franklin Road. Also to adopt a resolution contingently approving tentative subdivision map TSM 23-01, West Walton Village, subject to conditions of approval and mitigated measures, creating 66 half-plex lots and six single-family residential lots on approximately 9.16 acres located on the west side of Walton, approximately 670 feet north of Franklin Road.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Brookman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Onto item seven, and again, we have Mr. Doug Libby.
Okay. Okay, for our next item, Johnson Ranch Estates. So with this project, we handed out a memo with some amended conditions. So now I get my project straight, thank you. All right. So Johnson Ranch Estates is just a tentative subdivision map, unlike the previous two projects where you typically are making contingent approvals recommending to the city council and making contingent approvals. This is actually, the commission is making a decision. You are deciding to approve or deny this application. So tentative subdivision map 2209, project site's located on the west side of West Onstock Frontage Road, approximately 1,100 feet south of Pease Road. It's just over 15 and 3/4 acres in size, has a low-density general plan designation, so that's a 2 to 8 dwelling units to the acre, and zoned R1, single-family residential. The site is located in the northwest part of our city, it's surrounded by single-family residential uses, it's within the Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan area. That plan was approved originally in 1999, it was amended in 2002. What's kind of hard for me to believe is that it is now 2023, and this nice area town hasn't built out yet.
Thank you.
It has been planned for over two decades for this area to develop the way it's proposed this evening. There are no perceived incompatibilities of use because it's single-family residential, zoned, single-family residential surrounds it, it's consistent with the Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan. We did add a condition to address privacy concerns between two-story homes that may be proposed and existing single-story homes which may be adjacent in place today. Project will establish 82 single-family residential lots, 5.29 dwelling units to the acre, so well within that range of 2 to 8 units. There is a .09 acre triangle-shaped piece, which is a remainder parcel A, it's at the southwest corner of the project. That site frankly is, right now, remnant property. The goal is that that parcel, when the land to the south develops, will be used to create an additional lot. However, for right now, it's going to be placed into a landscape, lighting, and maintenance district so that the lot will be maintained and will not become a public nuisance, until that time where the property to the south develops. Traffic. So a traffic study was prepared for this project, there were three study intersections, Pease Road and West Onstock Frontage Road, Stabler Lane and the Butte Vista Roundabout to the west, and quite a distance to the south, but Queens Avenue and Peachtree Lane. Project traffic will result in minor length delays at study intersections, however, all levels of service will not change. A mitigation measure has been added that requires the developer pay a fair share towards signalizing Queens Avenue and Peachtree Lane intersection, and until a signal or other solution is put in place, a sign will be posted restricting southbound left turn onto Queens Avenue during peak hour traffics from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And that would be, the cost for that would be paid for by the developer. So highway aesthetics and noise, because the project's location, adjacent to the Frontage Road, adjacent to Highway 99, a 10-foot-high decorative wall or berm-wall combination along the West Onstock Frontage Road on the east side of the project will be established. The project also requires increased construction requirements for two-story homes built adjacent to the West Onstock Frontage Road and Highway 99 to minimize interior noise levels for residents. And that comes out of a previously prepared noise study. All city services will be, are available and will be extended to serve this project. There is a condition included which will have the developer pay its determined fair share of the future expansion of the detention pond, which is located to the south of the project site. Similar to our other projects tonight, an environmental assessment was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines. Specific mitigation measures were identified that we're carrying forward to you tonight in the environmental analysis as mitigation measures and a mitigated negative declaration is proposed. Similar to the last project before you, there's specific findings that must be made, and in this case, specific findings to be made if you wish to deny an application. And as I said earlier, because the project site is consistent with the Butte Vista Neighborhood Plan, staff is recommending approval of the application. So staff's recommendation, conduct a public hearing, making the findings, adopt a resolution approving the environmental assessment by adopting the mitigated neg deck, subject to the proposed amended conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and approving the map Johnson Ranch Estates will create 82 single-family lots out of the 15.84 acres. I'm here to answer any questions for you this evening, as well as Sean Menard with MHM Engineering. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Libby. With respect to that remnant lot, can you address the owner, the issue of ownership of the adjacent lot that you said that will probably take that and turn it into a portion of the single-family lot? Is it under the same ownership?
It is not.
Okay. So in the interim, if it's going into a landscape and lighting, where will ownership rest? Will that be granted to the city?
So it's, the land itself will retain ownership with the current property owner.
Okay.
However, the land will be placed in the landscape lighting district for maintenance and overseeing the parcel until such time as development is feasible, so it can be incorporated to the south.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? In reference to that lighting and landscape district, who will be funding that? Will the applicant do the initial landscape installation, and then the city maintain it, or how will that work out?
So the property owners who live in the subdivision will pay a portion of their property tax, will go for the, to pay for the overseeing this.
Okay, thank you.
And the original landscaping yes will be installed by the developer.
Perfect, thank you much. Any questions? All right, time to open the public hearing. Again, be sure each speaker states their name for the record and uses a microphone so it will be picked up by the video.
Sam?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh. Good afternoon, my name's Rex Birch, I live at the very end of Butte Ben Lane. The only thing, definitely second-story homes, I'm not a big fan of that because I have a pretty good-sized lot, and the field next to me is probably about three to four feet below my property line right now. So as far as erosion and rodents and gophers and whatever's going to come about when you start tearing up all the yard and start digging the underground, is there, is there plans on the way the trucks are going to come through and do their work, and is it all going to come down the end of the street? And, because our yards, or our street's not that big. The trash trucks are tearing up our street just turning around, three trucks a week, you know, just paved it last year, and it's starting to look like hell already.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, we start getting in-dumps and heavy equipment, and I'm sure they should come through the front road, but, you know, I'm not sure how that's proposed.
That might be a question for Mr. Libby if we even have thought that far ahead, I guess.
I think once we take in the public comment, the project engineer can get up and address some of these items for you.
Okay.
And is there a future insight of the on-and-off ramps to Highway 99 off of Pease Road now that you're going to throw several hundred more families in that area?
That one, the on-and-off ramps to Pease Road, that's going to be beyond the city, unfortunately, because that's going to be a Caltrans issue. The city can go to bat for it, but getting Caltrans to move could be a whole nother thing, that I do know. But any further questions the developer would like to speak on?
Go ahead and answer your questions.
Yeah, I think that's about all I have right now off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, and I represent the applicant in our West Homes on the property. So some of these questions, some are actually in the conditions of approval, it's a part of the entitlement process, that we have to, we cannot have our, all of our lots have to drain towards the roadway, the new roadway. And so there is a condition that we have to be within six inches, basically our backyards will match the same elevations within six inches of yours. If it's, I don't think, if it's four feet higher, we'll be below yours, but within six inches, but it will drain towards the roadway. So that concern that we're going to drain onto your property will not occur. As for traffic circulation, there was a traffic report done for this project, and I think Mr. Libby described that, and they considered this project, it's 82 lots, would go without that interchange. So that was considered in the traffic modeling, that there would be no interchange. And that's a long-term project, as you stated, that is beyond this project, so, but that was considered that, without that interchange in this modeling of the traffic. So one item that we do have in there, it's condition, item 6A, and I should have brought it up to Doug, I apologize. One of the things I was talking to the developer, and it's a two-story requirement, we fully understand the adjacent to the purchase properties and the other ones, so we're okay with those. But lots in the Village 3, it's lots 18, 19, and 20, we are working with, and our client is intending to probably work a deal out with the property owner to the south, and in all the development scenarios for that property to the south, that house that exists on just south of that is going to go away. So we understand if the house stays, this condition would stay, but we also want a provision, if we could add a provision, that if the house goes away, that two-story restriction or two-story with the, we have, and there's a little wording in there, two-story or with the light, the windows no more than six feet, that condition would go away. So that's the only provision we'd like to see is if that house goes away, that condition goes away. As for that Lot A, there was actually a scenario on the Village Development next door, when they laid this out, the Butte Vista Neighborhood, they really didn't consider the property lines, and it created the opportunity, it created these little unusable parcels, and so the intent would be to sell it to the Sudu property, which is the property to the south, and they would incorporate it into the lot. If they're not a willing seller, the next option would be to talk to the landowner that has the existing home and do what they call a lot line adjustment and sell it to them. So long-term, it would be incorporated into a city, one of the residential lots. So if you have any other questions, I can try to answer them.
Any questions from the commission?
All right, thank you.
That's enough, thank you much, Sean. All right, like to close the public hearing. Any further questions from the commission to Mr. Libby or anybody else? No further questions. All right, anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to adopt a resolution approving environmental assessment 2301 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the proposed conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and approving tentative subdivision map TSM 2209, Johnson Ranch Estates, creating 82 single-family residential lots and a .09 acre remainder parcel on approximately 15.84 acres located on the west side of West Onstock Frontage Road approximately 1,100 feet south of Pease Road. Assessors, parcel numbers 59, 03, 00, 08, and 009. One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nor?
Yes.
Oh, wait.
Just to address Sean's comment regarding the two-story, Doug, if you'd like to add on to that.
Yeah, the only thing I would... Yeah, the only thing I would say is that the condition as worded includes provision or as otherwise approved by the Development Services Director. So this meeting is, is on film with the applicant making the request, and you have me standing at the, at the microphone telling you that there's the option for the director to make that adjustment, should that scenario play out.
So there's no need to amend the condition as written?
We feel that no adjustment to the condition is necessary.
You heard it here first, folks.
All righty, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nor? Yes. Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burson Brookman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Also, sir, I'd like to say to you guys, we do hear you. I know a lot of people come in and they'll, they'll get up and they'll say their piece, and we pass things anyway, and we do hear you, I promise that. It's just like Doug said in his presentation, that in order to vote no on this, one of these conditions has to be found, and if we cannot find one of those conditions, we kind of, we did hear you, I promise.
Well, I don't mind, they'll, it was just like, ten, twenty years, I'm like, all right. We're looking at a lot in Sutter, and the first thing my wife says is, what happens when the people behind us sell and put a two-story on it? I know where you're coming from.
All right, next would be item eight, consideration for Uba City Capital Improvement Project twenty-two zero twenty-three to twenty, uh, actually for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight, and staff presentation by Ben Moody.
Mr. Vice Chair, I need a quick break, please.
I don't know if we need to interrupt, but I'm.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
All right, before we go and we're talking about the last item, I would just like to add for the public, definitely, we appreciate your comment and your effort to show up. It's not gone unnoticed, and I would just, it looks like it happens real quick up here, but there's been a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that the road widths are right, to make sure the drainage meets our criteria in, in these different traffic requirements. It has a twenty-two number because really they've been working on it for the last six months, eight to a year, to really dial in that project to meet city standards, make sure the load layout works to get the best product we can that meets the development needs and also the city needs. And so, and definitely, if there's any questions with the development as it, as it occurs, please reach out to the office. We definitely will have a construction inspection team that cares about what the city facilities look like, you know, we wanna make sure the road is left in a good shape when it's done, so we're not having to maintain it. So if there's any problem with dust, traffic, rodents, um, road, you know, debris, please let us know. Okay, so we'll get into the capital improvement project budget. So this is really a procedural thing that occurs every year as part of the budget, and so, but, but it's a little glimpse into what's going on with the engineering team and the rest of the Public Works Department on some of the, where we're putting money in the city to build stuff. So, but what's before you tonight is really a procedural process to look at the budget and approve, prove that the way the city's programming money in the capital improvement program budget is in conformity with the general plan in regards to acquisition of land for public purposes, the disposition of land, street vacation, so basically, if we're selling land, getting rid of land, or we're abandoning streets, and then authorization or construction of any public buildings or structures. And so really, so we have this document, it's this big, thick, hundred-and-twenty-eight-page document every year that the Public Works Team and the city goes through, is where do we have these available funding sources? Where do we program? What do we need to build? What do we need to maintain? And we, and we call it out in this document as far as, and, and that gives us a work plan as far as what city staff works on to implement over the next year, or the next five years, really. It's, it's a, it's a five-year document, programming document, but we're really looking year, it's a rolling document, but it looks about five years out. And so it's broken down into categories, general, facilities, community services, public safety, streets and roads, water, and wastewater. And one of the key things really, you know, it's this big document, it's really an accounting document, but what I try to pull out of it for you is really look where the money's coming, the available money, there's not a huge amount of money, but the available money that comes into the city and that we're able to program for projects, up, are, these are the funding sources. You have your general fund, that is typically from your sales tax dollars, you have transportation Development Act, which is also a sales tax, it's a quarter cent of the sales tax that comes back to the city. You have streets and roads, which is the gas tax funding, so every time you pay your gas tax at the pump, this is what comes back to the city. You have development impact fees, federal grants, state revolving funds and grants, community development block grant funds, which are federal funds, then you have your water, wastewater, and then some various, some other type of grants. And so really, this is where the money comes in, I have it bold, so you have four-point-three million or so in road money that needs to go out, you have your water and wastewater, which look like big numbers, but they really probably need to be about five times as big in order to keep up with our, the value of our infrastructure and where we're at. And so that's, that's something that we're working on, and I'll hit, highlight real quickly as we go through there. The rest of this, the general funds, really, that, these small peanuts in the scheme of things, to keep the lights on, and, and there's no planned development impact fee roads funded additionally with this year. So I'll work through them, these are the highlights. And so if you look at that five-page summary, or that summary page that I gave you, up at the top, it, it has the category that says general projects, and so that's the summary page, so on the left, you'll see ten-seventy-two through thirteen-thirteen, and that's, that's basically every single project that's in there, but some are carryover, because it's a five-year document, and then every year, we look at the specific planning, program funding for each year. And so here's the various list of projects, that we, I have those in that summary by category, and some of the big ones denote, really, the highlights is what I was gonna hit on, is, are that you have a property abatement, so two-hundred-and-eight thousand, typically we ask for about fifty thousand dollars in general fund money, which usually is highly competitive funding. And you guys, please feel free to ask me questions as I'm going through it, it's really interactive if, if questions come up. And so the Development Services Department code enforcement was successful with obtaining a CalRecycle grant, so about a hundred-and-seventy thousand plus or minus is been, of this money has been received for encampment cleanup, so homeless issues, so hotspot issues, so we received a grant, we did that a few years ago, where we were cleaning up the levee and along the bike trail. And so again, which is very nice to see, because we could use that money for the various encampments around town. Another big one is the general plan, and this is negative four-hundred thousand, which isn't great, it really, it shows because the general plan, because the general fund dollars that are in this fund account are highly sought after for other projects, and we don't have enough really for the city. And so what they're, what they've basically done is have taken four-hundred thousand dollars out of that to use to fund different projects that I'll hit on later on. And so when I, when I'm asked, what do I think, what I think is someday we gotta pay the piper. Over the last three years, we've been pretty successful with the state pushed, pushed out a lot of money, a lot of grants for housing updates and zoning updates that we, we capitalized to do a general plan refresh that Doug's currently finalizing, and we just pushed through the housing element update. And so I, I loved our attorney's update, basically, we put new tires and paint job on a two thousand and four Ford. That two thousand and four Ford will run for a while, but sooner or later, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna come where we gotta do a new one. And so for another ten, fifteen years, you know, those, they're expensive documents, they're three million, four million dollars for the outreach, for the, for the necessary studies that need to be taken place to, to run through that. So what I recommend is that we come back and we continue to put the hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars away a year, so in ten years from now, we have some funds in there. And then these are just, this is some internal technology funding, part of that would be sixty thousand dollars that the building, the Development Services Team also acquired for updating our website to process online solar permits. And so basically, it's a faster way to, people can now pretty much get the review and application for solar online quickly. Not that anybody, maybe it's probably too late now, solar's starting to slow down, maybe or not, but there's, we're still processing a lot at the counter. This is a big one I highlight, because we're not putting any money in it. Typically, we put hundreds, hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars into this for the facilities projects. What's, what's highlighted on this is that this year, there's no general fund money going into this, this category, which there's some, there's existing budget, existing budgeted money in those accounts that we'll utilize, but the, these accounts are really used to redo the roofs, painting, you know, stucco repairs, your glasswork, and so with things, well, that's trying to find some money to, to, to program other general fund stuff, we, we pretty much strap these accounts this year. And here's another, on the community services projects, one, another one that took a toll was the program Dog Park and Moore. And so there, there's a couple things. First, it's the general fund dollars are, are these, these dollars that are competitive, that are fighting with public safety in order to program, and then also where the Dog Park at Moore came to be was, when we looked at the CIP this year, we really looked at, to also streamline it for what the staff has capacity for. And so instead of putting the money there and then not delivering it, we really looked at this year, how much money do we have? How much money can we really get off the books over the next year and then position some of the money around? And so Moore Avenue off of Bridge Street there, realistically, with Bridge Street construction still going on this year, and other funding needs for the Harder Park project coming on, the Sutter Bike Path closure, the Bocce Ball Courts that we're working on for San Brandon, we unfunded this based on just what we could deliver, and then also to save the money for other projects. I just highlight Pluma Street Improvements, I don't know how much you guys have heard about this, I don't wanna beat a dead horn, we, we previously programmed two-point-three million, the majority of that is, is grant funding for the, the, for the Pluma Street downtown, and so it's important, I guess part of that I wanted to highlight is because it's a structure. So of that list of items for the planning commission to consider, there's gonna be, there's programmed streetlights on Center Street, and then a archway sign, and so it gets a little bit gray on, is that a structure? Technically, it is a structure, and it's programming public funds, so I wanted to call that out. And then also Bocce Ball Court was a recently added item that's gonna go, that's proposed at San Brandon Park, that's planned to be out to bid very soon, if not already, that, that's programmed for a public space. Anything before I go?
No questions.
Okay, so public safety's projects, and so when I was looking at those funding projects, this is where the competitiveness comes for, really, that when you need to maintain buildings, when you need to do street, or I'm sorry, when you need to maintain buildings that are associated with public safety, and the funds are really limited to this, to the general fund dollars that are competitive. There, there's not a gas tax that's funding it, there's not a water, it's not part of your water bill, it's not part of your sewer bill typically, and so this is, these are the projects that really, they pulled the four-hundred thousand dollars, they pulled the hundred-and-ninety to make this work and deliver these projects. And so what was prioritized for this year was renovations at Fire Station Number Two, to do some remodel work, clean some stuff up, and then a big item was the PD Evidence Storage Building. So for quite some time, in order to handle bulk storage and, and handle the evidence, there needs to be a climate-controlled building. This is really an eight-hundred thousand dollar project, but we're bringing five-hundred thousand dollars more money into it to do it. And so, go ahead.
Definitely voted on the last budget.
You did, and, and what really came of it is prices are just off the hook, and so, so, so prices, you know, for metal, for just construction have pretty much doubled almost or, you know, gone up significantly. And then in addition to that, when we really looked at it, when we were seeing the costs inflate so much, we, they weren't building the building they wanted, it was just a metal building. It really needs to be a conditioned, where it has some insulation, it has, I mean, this isn't, it's still a metal building, but in order to meet requirements required to be evidence, you know, handling, there, there needs to be some climate control. And so we went back to the drawing board and said, hey, if we gotta add this much money to it, what to do it right, so we're not trying to come back and retrofit it, you know, five years down the road. And, and so that's where the additional money's coming from. And then Fire Station Number Four, this is a training tower, it's really about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar project, there was some existing money in the project, this is some additional money for the concrete pad. And so what they want to do, it's a, it's kind of a, I don't know, a rector set type of, type of building where they, they have this training tower off, it's sort of beyond O'Leary there, next to the Fire Station Number Four, and, and it's, you know, they do all sorts of training, kind of like at Fire Station One, how they have the, anybody seen the old, it's kind of the house there? It's somewhat similar there, but they, they run various drills with it and different procedures. Streets and roads, so never enough, I've, I've been given plenty of presentations lately at the buddy study, budget study sessions, our Budget Ad Hoc Committee, and to our grand jury, just on the state of the roads, the roads aren't great out there, and really, where we're at is, I need about thirteen million dollars a year to, to keep them where we're at, so they're not getting worse, and, and we're really spending about a million and a half a year. And so I have this huge void of, of need for roadwork that I'm programming. So when I, when we saw this number originally that was, that was around four-point-three, that's total money that goes into the road fund, but I have, I have different things regarding sidewalk improvements, projects that have grant funding, or that big projects like Bridge Street or Walton, and they're not all just road rehab, where we need to go out, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-five centerline miles, so approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-plus lane miles of roadway that really need to have that surface treatment that you talked about, that, that really needs to happen out there every seven to ten years, just so the road doesn't oxidize, it doesn't break down. And so that's where I need that, thirteen million is really what I wanna be putting out there on the roads, to, to keep them where they're at, and if not, start making them better with the grants. And so I, I could get into that as much as you guys want, but, so from that, from that, where we're programming money this year, the highlights are about one-point-one in road rehab, we're defunding Tulley Parkway, this goes back to, not that they were taking this off our priority list, but looking at it, that, hey, we had this Transportation Development Act money, that TDA money I talked about, that has requirements that you have to spend it at a certain timeline. We get one-point-five to one-point-seven every year, and if I put it there and not, and don't spend it, then the state starts, you know, sending me emails about problems, and so we're taking the TDA money out of there, we're reprogramming it to the residential road rehabs and the various projects, but it's still, it's still on our to-do list. And so Tulley Parkway's still, it's still a project in the CIP, and where the city's really prioritizing our major roadwork over the next few years is to finish Bridge Street, finish Walton, Walton's under design right now, we're, we're piggybanking money away, this road rehab account, this one-point-three, there's an existing, I think, couple million bucks in there right now, that we're putting money away to add to that match, because it's probably gonna be a five to eight million dollar job by the time we're done. And then we'll go to Garden Highway, I don't know if, I don't know if it was before last meeting, but we recently received a grant to rehab four-point-three million, four-point-three million dollars to rehab Garden Highway from Lincoln Road to Bog. And so, so really, that's, with the staff that I, that we have, it's, it's finished bridge, do Walton, do Garden Highway, and we're gonna continue to work on the design for Tulley and, and push that stub up to the north. And, and so, and a lot of that, and a lot of that money, instead of being this TDA-type funding source that's in the streets and roads, we're gonna use DIF, that, that development impact fee. So as those projects came in, they have to pay about ten thousand dollars a unit for road funds, that, that we're gonna utilize funding that we have in the bank for impact fees to, to fund that project. Water, right now, here's a picture of, of a project that's going on up at the water treatment plant off of North Gate, and so a, a new second groundwater well, we have one ground, groundwater well, one at the treatment plant that is about, can supplement up to about ten percent of the city's needs. With the drought, this has been a long ti- been in the works here for maybe three to five years of punching in a new groundwater well, just to give us more options. If, if we get into a drought condition, it, it provides more resiliency, and so we've, the, the hole in the ground has been punched, and so what they're doing right now with Phase Two is they're putting on the top, so they're, they're doing the motor. So they're, they're doing the motor, they're putting in the pump, they're doing all the electrical work. And so we're hoping to have that pump, that well finalized and be a resource for the city long-term here in the next few months. Again, this is where the needs always, with, with regulations constantly going up, the story at the treatment plants really are that the energy PG&E is just off the hook, chemical bills are off the hook, everything we're seeing, anything from 15 to 30% increases from last year that had, you know, these huge 15 to 30% increases from the year before. And so that are, just are not keeping up with our rates. And so the city's cognizant of that. We're having to limit where we're putting funding on really what we could deliver this next year. And then really look to, we're cognizant of our demographic. I can't come back to the, the constituents and, and have a Prop 218 vote and say, hey, everybody want to raise your rates 30%, you know, to catch up? And so we try to work within what we have, but at the same time, not kick the can down the road. So we're, we're starting to put the processes behind the scenes in place so we can continue to, to adjust rates, so we don't kick it down too far, then, then have to jump it up. So that's in the future, but that's, it's constant. So just as your, your phone bill goes up, the, the cities will be working to increase your, your water and wastewater rates too. But, but in, incognizant of what's, what's capable. But also to not let the system fall apart where it costs more to fix it because we're not maintaining it. Wastewater CIP, you know, this is just another thing. It's been really regulations and then energy and chemical prices and inflation are really hitting this budget hard. This last year, we have some regulations. What you, what you see here is a picture of our diffuser. This is a pipe that basically the water comes in from the river at the north end of the city and it goes out at the south end of the city. And so this is typically supposed to be underwater about a foot before it discharges. What's happened is with the, with the 2017 Orville incident, it eroded the Shanghai Falls and it made a channel. And so instead of having that, those falls in that hydraulic jump where there was water constantly at a certain level, it changed the wa, the river flow and it, it put our diffuser high and dry. And so we've been mandated by the state where we've been, we have some, some ponds across the river where we discharge into ponds. We had some emergency action where we were allowed to, where we're out to discharge at lower levels. And then we also put in a, another discharge point, we call it Discharge Point Three, which is, is basically a pipe across the river that goes into the river temporarily until we build a new diffuser. But these new diffusers, they got some price tags. And so to meet the new qual, it's 35 to 40 million bucks, which, which equates to about $18, $20 per person per month for the next 20 years. And that's just one segment of our need where I, I need new digesters, I need new ammonia side stream processes, the meat regulations. And so we're, you know, really we're taking it in and putting it out cleaner than we took it. But all those things, it's, it's really, they're expensive. Just those three projects right there are close to $100 million. And so those are things that we need to work on over the next five to 10 years to make sure we put in place or we're discharging appropriately and, while we're meeting the operation requirements. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We could flip through any of those summaries. There, there's others on the summary list that if there's any specific questions on, but really what I'm looking for tonight is action to, to, after reviewing the project list, that it's in accordance with the general plan, that you determine that the proposed CIP is consistent with the general plan and you find, you make the recommendation as stated.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the public? No questions from the public? All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah. All motion to find that the projects listed in the fiscal year 2023 through 2028, Uba City Capital Improvement Project Budget is consistent with the Uba City General Plan and forward findings to the City Council.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Nor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burris and Brookman?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have future agenda items, Mr. Doug Libby. And actually, if I could, before we go any further, I'd like to say I made a mistake earlier. I was supposed to announce that Commissioner Gill is currently traveling and is away from the area and has been excused from the meeting. And my error on that, I apologize.
So for the record, we have two excused absences tonight.
Yes, correct.
So, okay, so for, I have a couple of updates for you and then a couple of items that are gonna, that are coming down the, the pipeline for a future meeting. So the updates are, you remember the Thiara Estate subdivision, which was up on the north side of town, bisected on the west side, Elmer Avenue. You had a number of residents from Elmer Avenue that came out and visited us that evening. And so that went before the City Council and was approved at the beginning of this month. The other item, which was kind of a, a big deal, was our housing element general plan amendment and rezoning to bring us consistent with state law in our new housing element. So that project was approved for 68 acres, was ultimately redesignated to be able to accommodate multifamily in our city. You remember there was one parcel that was somewhat controversial. It was over by Mr. Paul's Market. We did not have property owner consent and we still did not have property owner consent by the time we went to the council. So the day of the council, we pulled it. And so, so that parcel did not change zoning or general plan. It remained as it is. So obviously that, I think, made the residents on Elmer Avenue happy. But the other land did get, go through with no opposition. So for, was there a question?
The other one, did that include the piece on Walton across from the project we just looked at tonight?
Oh, the Merriman Village? That's.
The one that Habitat Humanities is looking at?
Yeah, across the street from West Walton. So that project is, they have filed a development plan and it is in process.
Okay. All right. But was that a part of the adjustment in the housing?
Yes, that was, that parcel was included. So yeah, the, the zoning on that's changing to R3.
Awesome. Thank you.
So for future projects, we do have a small general plan amendment rezon for a small parcel north of Bridge, west of Walton. It's going to change some, what's Office to R3. It's actually a pretty small parcel. If they would have come in early enough, we may have even included them in our, our GPA rezon project we just finished, but they, we were too far down the road for it. So they, they submitted their own application. But the bigger project to note is the Harder Marketplace. So that's coming forward in the near future. That's the northwest corner of Harder Parkway and Highway 20. So vacant land across the street from Walmart and the McDonald's and on the west side of Harder Parkway. We are processing use permits for a Raising Canes, Arco, and Dutch Brothers from south to north. And so those are going to be coming forward to you in the near future. So that's what I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Developmental Services Director report, Mr. Moody.
Okay, I'll just add a few fun things. So a bus tour. So Ashley, our development liaison, is coordinating a bus tour. So we did this last year where basically we coordinated a tour with the mayor and they sent out a social media invite pretty much to, to the first 15, 20 folks that sign up that we do a guided tour of things that are happening in Uba City. And so it's a fun little two-hour tour, basically, but we, we have some great events planned where we're going to run through the new park, run over to some of the new developments that are happening, Hinson Ranch and Dunn Ranch, get a tour of one of the new homes. We run through some of the other developments that are occurring around the city. We're trying to hit different council districts where we catch up with a council member and then do a tour over at the pending Holiday Inn Express that's about to open. They're going to open up the bottom two floors soon. And so we're going to catch that and do a walkthrough. So if you're interested, we could definitely shoot out the notification to the group of when it's coming, but it's June 15th. I think that's Friday or is that Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday morning-ish, right? Thursday morning. And so that's, that's pending. We've hired a new permit tech so to add to our capacity, which is nice, so we're not relying so much on part-time help, gives us a little bit more support. And so Stephanie Dulay is a new permit tech at the front that we're looking forward to staying with us for many years to come and being a resource. What else? Another big item is LAFCO. And so there, there's a, I don't know how familiar the group is with the Local Agency Formation Commission. So Sutter County LAFCO, it's an important body that's made up of the city, the cities. So there's representatives from Live Oak and from Uba City, Sutter County, and then also agencies at large. I think we have special districts on there. And so it's, it's a group of seven with a public member that oversee anything to do with annexations, municipal service reviews. Doug, I'm going to get this wrong. But so Doug is my, my expert, in-house expert. And so what's been happening, they meet bi-monthly. And what's occurred is the current executive director, John Benoit, is retiring. And so with that, the city in, in coordination with the county has proposed that, with LAFCO Board accepting recently, that the new executive officer will be Doug Libby, who has over 15 years of experience as the past plan, executive officer for LAFCO. And then to help balance that out will be the county acting as county, as the council. So the, the county attorney basically will be, will be the council for the LAFCO to help avoid any sort of items of conflict that, that where there is a potential item for conflict, we could recuse ourselves out. And so right now at staff level, we're reviewing, there's some agreements, there's some budgets and, and some stuff that needs to happen that's going to occur over the next month or two for that transition to happen. So, and Doug, definitely with his experience, is highly sought after and it's hard to find somebody with that experience and we're looking forward to the transition. Then the, really the only other thing I got and I'll open up to questions if there's any specific questions driving around town you want to know about. But Ashley, if you want to give a little update on Open Counter.
Hello, everyone. So we have a new software that we'll be launching mid-next month. So last year, the council approved integration of this new software called Open Counter. It will be linked on the city's website and it's more or less a permit planner. So you can look, okay, I want to start a business or I want to develop something and it will walk you through step by step where can you do it? How can you do it? What do you need to do it? And how much does it cost? And so that will be a really great resource that individuals in the community can use 24/7 without having to call staff. Of course, you can still call staff, but it will be a great additional resource. We're planning to launch mid-June and I'll be presenting to council on June 20th if anyone wants kind of a little run-through of how the system works. It's not live yet, but it will be permits.ubacity.net. So quick and easy way to remember and a really great software for the community.
So Ashley definitely undersold herself. So she's been working diligently for six months to get this up and going. I like to say it's TurboTax for the, the building and the zoning system. You know, it makes pretty pictures. It, it dumbs everything down so regular people could walk through the process. And so we're hoping it's a real resource and we'll plan to bring that demonstration to the next Planning Commission meeting after it launches. So we wanted to get it to you because we might not meet until July. And so we're going to open it. It's going to, you'll probably see a social media blast and different press releases going out about this Open Counter software. And so we'll follow up. We just don't want to leave you out of the loop, but that is, that is pending near, near launch. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions here?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, report of actions from the Planning Commission. Any commissioners have an update? Carrie, maybe from the county?
No report from the county. It's been very quiet. I think we've had a meeting in a month and a half, two months.
Wow. Anybody else? Commissioners? All right. With that said, I'd like to adjourn at 7:26. Things are ready for coming.
Thank you.